...fall under this greater Florida consortium of school boards. So it's very important for us that this passes and that people are given something to read and to act on.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
You know, I believe that as school board members for public schools, that one of our jobs is to advocate for our public schools and also to advocate for our taxpayers. What if this amendment were to pass, we would be paying our taxes to somebody who would not be, there wouldn't be anyone locally that you could go to to see how they're doing or where you can complain about their budget or anything else. It would be taxation without representation if in fact, schools were allowed to be given presence in a county without the county school board overseeing them. So it'd be taxation without representation, in my opinion, if it passed. But I think as a school board member, I believe that part of my job is to advocate for public schools as we do in the Florida School Boards Association and as we do in the consortium. And I think one of my jobs is an advocate and I believe that this is what we're doing is we're advocating for public schools.
Very good. Thank you very much. I'm going to close with that just because I feel like that was directed at me. So, you know, I believe our job as school board members is to advocate for our taxpayers and that is doing the work of the Sarasota County School Board at this dais. For that, I'd like to take a vote on the motion before us. All those, sorry, I guess.
I'm sorry, I can't. You just made a comment that I would like to address.
Call the question?
All right, Dequay is the question.
Vote on the call to question?
Go ahead, vote on it.
I want to vote, yeah.
All those in favor, call the question. Say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Robinson, Mrs. Goodwin, Mrs. Brown, please vote.
Aye.
I already did.
Okay, what I wanted to.
Mrs. Zucker, you'll be happy to make a statement after, during comments section? Or when we're?
Wait a minute.
By all means. Go ahead. The vote's already been taken, but if you have a comment?
Yes, I do and I don't appreciate what's happening here at this board meeting today. I do not like your demeanor. I do not like the fact that anytime I want to speak, you say something about it. I don't like it. I do not know what the problem is here. Please vote. I'm not going to say anything.
And the motion passes four to one. I think I need to make a correction, actually, if I may. I need to vote, I pressed incorrect.
I think you can, we don't need to re-vote. I think you can.
Correct. For the record, I will be voting no on the motion.
And the minutes should reflect that the vote is three to two.
Thank you, three to two. Moving to the next item.
Item number 40, I would like to make a motion to for approval of the agreement for the school resource officer program between the city of Venice, Florida and the school board of Sarasota County, Florida, effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? Mr. Robinson?
I just have, because it's right down the street from my office, I go to the Venice High School and Elementary on a regular basis and I just want to say that I'm glad that they're staying those resource officers at, I know we're getting a new Venice L1 because he was promoted to sergeant because he was doing such a great job, but the Sergeant Hamel now, but Officer Terry and the other people at Venice High, they do such a wonderful job and I know from being a Venetian, the people in Venice, they're very happy that we were able to reach this agreement, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I wanted to echo what Mr. Robinson said. I think that, you know, Venice is a great community, a very tight-knit community and I know that the SROs played a very significant role in those schools and so I'm excited to see that moving forward. Just for members to note that we skipped item number 40, so we are, just to make sure.
That was item number?
That's what we're on.
Correct, but on your screen because the super evaluation will be on, out of order, so I just want to make sure that you don't make the same error I just did and vote incorrectly.
Yeah, I've got Venice on my screen.
It's number 40.
Okay, so all those, please vote on the item before you. And the motion passes five to zero. Moving on to the next item of new business.
I would move that the school safety program between the Sarasota County Sheriff's Office and the school board of Sarasota County, Florida, effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, be approved as presented. Second.
Motion in a second. I'm sorry, my screen is not on the right one. I just look forward to closing this chapter and moving forward on our school security. I'm very appreciative of our partners and look forward to continue to collaborate. Members, if you could vote on the motion before you.
Did somebody motion it or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Did you want to?
I already voted.
You voted.
And the motion passes four to one. Moving on to the next item of new business.
Forty-two. I move for approval of the agreement for the school safety program between the city of Northport, Florida and the school board of Sarasota County, Florida, effective July 1, 2018 through July, June 30, 2019, as presented.
Is it, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments? I don't want to be a robot here, but I would share the same thing that I'd said before, that I appreciate the collaboration with our partners. Members, please vote on the motion before you. And the motion passes five to zero. Moving on to the next item of new business, which will bring us to the superintendent's evaluation. I know that this is going to be kind of encompassing a number of different action items today. I want, just for, you know, from a historical standpoint, this is the first time we'll be doing and utilizing a new evaluation tool that we voted and approved back in June of 2016 and we also did a workshop. There is, what I was hoping to do today was having a discussion with everyone about what their evaluation stated. I think as I met with the superintendent mentioned that what I had hoped and maybe moving forward was that we can gather everyone's, the board can gather everyone's evaluations for us to review in advance for this discussion so that you can see different perspectives before coming to the board, but that is not where we are today. I know we, is there any comments or discussion or questions on the process?
Question on the process. Are we to give you the number and somebody will collate the numbers so that we can arrive at our targeted number for the superintendent?
I believe the process that the board is going to go through, obviously subject to what you all have to say, is you will each have the opportunity to speak on the evaluation. A motion, what has historically happened is a motion would be made to determine the superintendent's evaluation to be, fill in the blank, whatever word is made, and then that would be voted on by the board. I would remind the board that really you have several jobs to do today. One is to render your evaluation. The second is to set forth goals for performance pay for the, I guess now the current, the 18-19 school year. And lastly, to determine what the superintendent's base salary should be for the 18-19 school year. And that in part is tied to the evaluation. The contract states if the evaluation is effective, then you will determine the base salary for this succeeding year, the 18-19 year. So exactly how the board wishes to do all those things is obviously up to the board, but those are the three determinations that need to be made by the board at this meeting.
Thank you. Well, so I guess, thank you for that outline from the critical components of the contract. What I had hoped to do today is kind of come together as a board and discuss where our individual evaluations have led us. You know, this, actually, it was said recently that a person's success in life, it can usually be measured by the number of uncomfortable conversations he and she is willing to have. I know that there are differing opinions on this board on a number of issues. I know that there's often discussed that there's a philosophical difference that divides this board. And personally, I don't think that that's truly what divides this board. I think there is no question that any single person up here has an unshakable focus on doing what's right for our students and our community. I know that this past year, personally speaking, has been very challenging for me and I believe that it comes down to, there are a lot of external variables, but there are a lot of variables that did have one common thread. And as I said earlier to our new members of the team, I mean what I say that I want every person in this role to be successful because if we aren't successful, that will trickle down into the classroom and hurt what our common goal is here for. My concern is that we, in order to be an effective board, whether you like each other or not, whether you have long-term relationships or not, that you need to be objective and focused on what your goal is as an elected official on a school board. And that is for our students and that is for ensuring that we have the best education at public schools for our students. And in order to be effective in that, I think there needs to be trust and respect and civility and sharing of information in a fair and balanced way. And I fear that the last, certainly the last six months have been an illustration that that is not taking place. And that undermines, I can speak personally, my ability to do the job that I was elected to do. I am concerned about the relationships that we have in this community and the deterioration of our partnerships. I don't believe I'm alone in this circumstance and I know that when I go out beyond these chambers that I hear this regularly and it continues to concern me and it weighs very heavily on me because this is not a conversation I have been looking forward to having, but it's a duty that I must do. I wanted to make it open to a conversation and be respectful of one another because what I am concluding is a very serious nature and I don't want to do it in isolation. I prefer it be a discussion as board members. And like I said at the beginning, this is a discussion that is sometimes difficult to have, but I think it has been needing to be taken place for some time. I will say, for a historical standpoint, I had concerns. I've shared them with the superintendent privately. I had shared them written and then I did intend to bring them forward and did so at a meeting, but unfortunately, that went a very different direction and it was a distraction and unfortunately, I don't think that there's been an opportunity for the board to truly discuss where this district is going. And that's what my goal and hope is for today. If there are no thoughts or concerns or questions and everyone just wants to go about exactly how they have their evaluation, I'm fine with that and I can move forward with my recommendation, but I wanted to open the floor to the board to be respectful, again, to work collaboratively and discuss what our varying opinions are. Mrs. Zucker, are you?
I'm trying.
Mrs. Zucker, go ahead.
I don't want to get in trouble for speaking.
No, no, go. Mrs. Zucker, go ahead.
It's an awkward way that we have to do this evaluation, but I think it's fine if we just, all of us at, when Shirley could go, I could go, I can go first and we just talk about the evaluation and what we scored him because that's really what everybody wants to know. What did he score and why did we think about it, about why we scored it that way? So I don't have a problem. What do you want to talk about? You want to talk about what we, how we evaluated the superintendent, correct?
I'm not going, I mean, that's what I was hoping.
I'm asking.
Yeah, I would hope for that there would be a discussion that I just, what I don't want to continue for this board especially is this continuation of a three-two. We keep talking about it and I don't want that. So instead of taking my own personal opinion, which is concerning and I would like to hear the concerns, this is an important practice of the evaluation of our superintendent. This is the first evaluation we've done. We're coming off the hails of a very, very challenging year, some great successes that I don't want to be diminished, that have been achieved from this, you know, from the staff and the students, the community at whole, but also some other very challenging things that we have not had an opportunity to discuss as a board. What I don't want, and I could certainly, but I could certainly just make a motion, but I would like this to be a discussion for the board together to kind of hear different perspectives because I would like for us to come together and recognize and hear different opinions and make decisions on where we think this district is going. Mr.?
So would you like us to read our evaluation, read the contents?
But I am open to either way. Mr. Robinson?
Well, I think that if somebody wanted to read their evaluation, I'm not going to say that somebody couldn't read their evaluation. I'm just speaking for this one board member. I'm willing to give highlights of the evaluation. I don't feel any need to go point by point.
No.
I think everybody pretty much understands where we're coming from individually, so that's my, but Ms. Zucker, if you feel that reading your evaluation is an optimal process for you, then I support your desire to do that.
It's not, Eric. It'll be out in the newspapers tomorrow, so it really didn't matter. But the thing I think that we're missing is that we have to give the superintendent an overall evaluation and that's on our last sheet that we have here when we total up the fours and fives and the ones and the twos. Because that has to be public so that that's, you get them all and then that's what he, what he's voted, rated.
That is correct.
Can you help?
Yeah, and I was trying to, I was trying to have more of a discussion prior to that and if that's not, I'm fine to move forward. Mrs. Goodwin, go ahead.
I want to add something about process because we're doing or using a different evaluating tool this year than we have used in years past. The ones that we used prior were really four or five things that just were like two sentences and really didn't give us any way of drilling down to the components of being a superintendent. This is something that we actually stole from Monroe County, actually. We saw that they were using this when their superintendent came to interview with us and it is a best practice, nationally considered a best practice, and it gives us a lot more information and a lot more cause to look at leadership, to look at curriculum, to look at all of the pieces and parts and facets that we need to evaluate our superintendent. So I want to make that statement. I would choose not to, I would choose not to read those. But Mrs. Ziegler, in terms of assumptions or in terms of highlights of partnerships and erosion of partnerships, I've heard you say that a couple of times. I know there was an issue with the sheriff's office. I know that there isn't an issue with State College of Florida. We had an issue with their articulation agreement and that was really something that was facilitated with Steve Cantis and with Dr. Covert at Pineview, but I really wouldn't say that our relationship with that entity was bad. And I think we'll rebuild the sheriff's partnership. And I think our partnership with the other policing entities are good, so I don't know. I see this superintendent out in the community a lot. I see him meeting with people and talking to people freely and willingly and going wherever and I think that's very, very good. He is much more visible, much more of a public figure, much more in Tallahassee and doing other creative and critical things. So from that standpoint, I really don't have the same concerns. Am I, is there something that you need to flesh out that I didn't take into consideration?
Well, no, I appreciate, thank you for, thank you for engaging me for that. But I, again, I think the purpose of me opening up this for dialogue is because this is a very important position and it's unique because of sunshine and I don't think it's fair to anyone sitting in the superintendent, no matter who it is, sitting in that seat where you don't have a discussion. And I know what I put forward was some very tough evaluation scores and they're what I believe as I've gone through, and this is an evaluation process that I have not just done or just preparing for today, this has been for months. And because I think this board and community needs to see us come together, I wanted to offer an opportunity for us to kind of share some highlights, concerns. I think one thing that Mrs. Goodwin mentioned upon was being out in the community and I, again, I want to reiterate that this is intended not to be personal, but to be focused on the overall goal. And that, I know that sometimes this is uncomfortable to say, but I am concerned that sometimes the communication appears to be more self-serving than focus on the organization as a whole and that concerns me. When we talk about human resources and we talk about hiring and retaining high-quality teachers and support staff, it comes down to culture and morale and people feeling valued and supported. You want to talk about protecting your schools, it's going to be making sure you have a strong environment for teachers and professionals to thrive in. And I'm worried we do not have that. Mr. Robinson?
I'm just a little confused about what's going on. So are we, I know you said you wanted a conversation, like I want to say stuff about partnerships, but I don't, but it's part of my evaluation. Is it now the time to talk about partnerships and how I think they are or should I be waiting to the time, there'll be a time where Shirley speaks and Caroline, we go down? I mean, how, I'm just trying to understand.
If you have any comments on concerns, I could, again, I was making this such that it would be a bit of a dialogue, almost similar to a workshop, and then moving to, if some, I mean, moving to.
And so instead of me going through my evaluation and Jamie?
No.
Okay, okay. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
I'm really confused too. What are, you know, normally when you've got an evaluation, each person, they don't have to.
Mrs. Brown, please. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I.
But I had a request to speak here.
I share Mrs. Brown. I don't know what I'm supposed to do right now. I don't know if I'm supposed to be talking about, I'd be happy to talk about the partnerships issue or always the optimal process because I have similar concerns that Ms. Ziegler has about the partnership. I'm just trying to make sure that I say the things at the right time and so that ones that people don't bring up the issue that I want to talk about. Partnership is clearly one of the things I want to talk about, but mine's going to be rather verbose.
Okay. I apologize for this to be confusing. Mrs. Brown, if you.
Yeah, I mean, I push my button and I light up, it goes away and I'm like.
You didn't.
I'm just saying, when I've had other evaluations, it doesn't get to be some dialogue on all kinds of things, but you look at what your evaluation is and where you rated him and, you know, I don't think you read every single page of that. We've never done that, but an overall evaluation, this is how I see the superintendent. And I'm not quite sure whether your comments were about the superintendent or about the board in general. I'm not quite sure. I mean, were you doing an evaluation of the superintendent right now or were you just having a general discussion?
I was sharing my, some pieces of where my evaluation went to, so.
Okay, so let me know when we start the evaluation then.
I apologize for miscommunication. Again, I said I think the process would have been beneficial if we all had each other's evaluation in advance to avoid this kind of awkward discussion.
Oh, well, no, we never do that.
By all means, if you each want to start with your evaluation, I will indulge that. Any, would you like to start, Mrs. Brown? Your number, your numerical, whatever your final evaluation is.
I was going through this and I pulled out some old evaluations and one of the ones in the folders was an evaluation from 2006 and that's when I was first running for office. And I don't know if anybody was here in 2006, but the person we were evaluating back then was Gary Norris. And if y'all remember, there was this hue and cry that we need to get rid of Gary Norris. He wasn't good for the schools. He came up with some grandiose plan and he wasn't good for the teachers. He wasn't listening and he was wasting our money and I'm like, wow, I'm looking at this and I'm like, you know what he did? He put active boards in our classrooms and the teachers hated it. I mean, anybody who was here then knows. They didn't like any changes. They didn't like his plan. Well, that next generation plan that was so evil, in fact, when I was running for office, I was asked, are you going to go with that plan? Are you going to support, you know, Dr. Norris or are you going to fire Dr. Norris? But I looked at that plan and I looked at, that plan was pretty good. And his idea of rather than having just those schools in our district that had PTAs that could afford to buy technology for their classrooms, he said, that's not fair. He said, what we need to do is go from the top of the county, you know, we go airport to Northport, but let's talk about, you know, our northern schools, you know, from Newtown down to Englewood and everywhere in between. Every school should have computers in their classroom. Every school, every classroom should have these active boards and not wait for the PTAs because some schools just can't afford it. And I look back on that and I'm like, you know, boy, I do remember those teachers very angry at Dr. Norris for wanting to do that. They were very angry about that and they wanted him fired. It turned out that he had, you know, resigned and then came, stayed on until we had a transition. But I'm, was thinking, well, yeah, sometimes the teachers aren't always right. They're looking at it from their perspective. They don't want to see changes. And I look at some of the changes that Dr. Bowden has done. We saw one of them in that dashboard and when you look at, you know, the leadership culture facilitates process to develop and implement a shared vision on focusing on improving students, promotes academic rigor and all of these, all of these things, this is where he has. I mean, if you want something in a superintendent, well, gets down to two things, we told him. We want you to raise our scores and we want you to pass that referendum. The referendum passed with the highest scores, with the highest percent ever and we've got our high scores. I mean, we were barely hanging on to that A last year. We got it by just one point and we went from a 63% to 67%. So we've got a solid A and when he talked about what the vision is someplace else, it asked, what's your vision? And I clearly know what Dr. Bowden's vision is for this school district. He wants us to go from a solid A to that number one position in the state and now we're short two points. And I know they're going to be looking at that dashboard and it's not just, not just Dr. Bowden looking at that dashboard, but it's going to be all of the administrators, all of the teachers, all of those classrooms and hopefully some of those parents will be looking too, to make sure that that is our goal. That is our goal and we're going to look at every student every day. That is our goal. So I gave him threes and fours on a lot of things. I didn't give him exemplary on anything even though, because when you get to leadership culture, he brought all that forward, but there's still some clouds hanging over him that I think probably could have been addressed better. I also know that some of the problems that we have, I don't think can be laid solely at his feet. I think there's some other feet that should be taking some of these too, but I do know that he's not blameless in this either. I think that, you know, he's, I spent over a year trying to get him and the union to sit down and talk and I hear, well, it takes two people to negotiate. It takes two people to sit down or want to make something work. Sometimes I say, you know, it doesn't take, I haven't even told you this, it doesn't take two people, it takes one person who really wants to get it done. I think the negative email blasts that are coming from the union really hurts the morale of our district. I know from talking to different teachers that they don't like the tenor, they're afraid to say anything, God forbid. They should be the recipient of some of those. I know what it's like to be getting some of that, but part of me says it's a little facetious to be calling me a name for not standing up for somebody else that may have been called names and I'm like, what, you're the only ones who get to call names? You're the only ones who get to harass? There's a problem in that, but there also, I think some of the problem also lies at Dr. Bowden's feet. I think he's done great things on the educational side, but some of those interpersonal things, I think what we need to do to move forward is perhaps. I think what we need to do to move forward is perhaps, we had that board training, I think we need to sit down with the board, the union leadership, and superintendent, and maybe have a referee in the room, so we can bring these things out and address them. I think had the allegations, the harassment allegations been more thoroughly discussed, maybe people wouldn't keep hanging over that. I mean, there were three investigations that all, I wouldn't say cleared him, but it's a lot of this he said, she said, but there wasn't ever any sexual contact. It was comments that may have been made and reactions, you know? But it looks like, I think if, rather than having to go to court and having a winner or a loser in those situations, sometimes if it's just, I'm sorry, let's work this out and move forward. I think that's where we need to be, and I don't think that all of the disconnects that are happening on the board can be laid at the superintendent's feet. I think most of the things we hired him for, improving the grades, he gets a star. Passing the referendum, he gets two gold stars. But it's some of those interpersonal relationships that he's having with some people, other people are thrilled with what he's doing. And bringing those two departments together for the curriculum and the professional development, that was a great thing. Putting the budgets together, when the legislature gave us only 47 cents per student, and we still had to fund the raises that you had promised the union, wow, that you were able to do that and still stay within our seven-and-a-half percent fund balance. And then you got thrown another curveball with the sheriff pulling out of the relationships. We were able to make some adjustments and still come in with that balance. When we were told we needed to harden all of our schools, right away, we had that adjustments done, stepped right up, and there was our budget. We were able to do it. I think that's the businessman side of you that gets those things done. But it's these interpersonal relationships, and I think the relationships with the labor is, I don't blame it all on you, but that's where you got your lowest scores. And I still, Pollyanna that I am, would like to see that relationship restored.
Thank you. Mrs. Zucker? Are you on? I don't know if that was from earlier or not.
Yeah, I'm on, but it's like crazy I can't do what Shirley just said. I gave you an overall 37, which everybody has to know that, because it all has to be tallied up, and his review is almost based on the total scores. So I've given him, I've given Dr. Bowden five fours, six fours, one five, and one three. So my three is in human resources, because I think there needs to be some emphasis put on human resources, that we can do much better than we're doing right now. I think what he did with settling the bargaining, this year was amazing, because we kept coming back and coming back and coming back until we could finally got a two-year agreement for the, for our bargaining, which didn't happen overnight. And yes, is there, and unfortunately, he is not able to establish a productive relationship with the bargaining group. So that's where you get walked down for. But the rest of it, you're great. And it's the values and ethics of leadership. I gave you a four, because I've witnessed you defend your principles and convictions in the face of pressure, and was very proud of you for handling the matter as you did. I don't believe that just because you're superintendent, you should be walked on, or somebody should talk back to you. I think it has to be mutual respect. And I now, and I saw some things that were happening, and you're great. Your communication is phenomenal. When I speak, I know you listen to me, and you write really well, and you speak well. I've seen you at enough functions now to recognize someone who's got it, because you can't speak off the top of your head if you don't have it in here. And I've watched you do that a lot. And the other thing that I would like to, as a special to you, is that you just received a Florida superintendent's special certificate through the Florida Association of District School Superintendents, which you did in a year, which is amazing. It's normally two years, but you hustled and got it done in a year, because you wanted that out of your way, and you wanted to move forward. And that's how you are with everything. You want to move forward, and that's what you've been trying to do with this district. I said the best of your day is visiting schools and interacting with teachers and There is a self-performance, this is human resource management. There is a performance evaluation in system in place. However, I believe that this needs to be improved. I also feel that when a person is not hired, they should receive a letter and thanking them for applying, not just letting them hang. Okay. I am organizational management. Your background is geared for organizational management. You do a great, you gather and analyze the data before you discuss it with us. And then you, and you are a great delegator. You do delegate to your staff. And you determine priorities by leaning heavily on your staff, like Scott Limpy. You leaned heavily on him. And Michael Andreas, I think that's the way it should be. We put you in place to run the system. You put them in place to run their departments, and that's what we should follow, that process, because that's... And we have community support, as evidenced by the 79% of voters. There's one more, and I have one to make. And there's, this one here is standard policy and governance. And I wanted to talk about all of the policies that we evaluated, and with your help and with Scott's help and with ours' help. You try to keep us informed on issues and needs in a timely manner. However, there have been so many changes and hot topics this year, it's been like riding on a roller coaster, ever-changing. I say you did a great job, considering the roller coaster you've been on. There is a problem regarding policymaking and administrative roles here, and we all know this. However, this has occurred on the board's part, not Dr. Bowden. He's well aware that he is an administrator. I think at times the board forgets this and tries to administrate, rather than to be And you have worked very hard to release control and empower others to take the lead in making decisions that affect this district. You're making a transition and gaining support, as shown, as shown by our grades and legislative appropriations support this year. Like you went to Tallahassee and got extra money for us that we needed for the summer school program. That was amazing. We had not been able to do it. I do believe, however, that the changes you made were made too soon, too quickly. If you had just waited a little longer, it might have been a little bit smoother. Not that you didn't, the changes didn't need to be made, they did. But you like to move forward, and you like to move forward fast. And when you see something, you want to solve it. And sometimes it's very difficult for you to hold back when you know what has to be done. But I think that that's my evaluation of you. Overall, I have a great relationship with you. I don't, I don't find fault with you, other than the things that I spoke of here. So in my books, we're going to keep you.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin?
When we look at this evaluation, we grade it not on meets or exceeds, but we rate it in five different ways. We start with one as not acceptable, two as developing, three as effective, four as accomplished, and five as exemplary. We have nine different standards that we came up with that accommodate that, and when all of you see this evaluation, you'll know what I'm talking about. I find the standard of leadership culture, we're still in the process, I think, of smooth transition in this, but I was particularly happy with the additional personnel at the schools. As Mrs. Zucker said, maybe that was made a little, little quickly, and perhaps people had pause. I know the union was concerned about that. But if you talk to any principal, they will tell you that this has made all the difference in the world in their lives, which are very, very busy, and they were really juggling lots of balls in the air. And I think that that has made a big, a big push and a big help for us this year in, in some of our grades going up in middle and high schools. I think that's been very, very productive and helpful. I talked to a teacher last week out on the campaign trail, and she said to me, you know, she said, Dr. Bowden came into my high school class, my high school English class in, at Venice High School, and she said, he listened to what I was saying, and, and then afterwards, he went and talked to the students before he talked to me. And I said, he'll always do that, I think, because he really is a person who listens to and works with students, and I find that to be refreshing. And I think Lori White is still out there in classrooms working herself. So I think most, most of our visionary leaders are just that, they are all about kids. I talked to Rex Jensen last week at a groundbreaking for a new road in Schroeder Manor T in Lakewood Ranch, and he said to me, thank you for introducing me to Dr. Bowden. He said, we had a great meeting, as you know, but he came up with his development planning staff, and we had a great meeting with our planning staff and his planning staff. And he empowers his staff, and then he gets out of the way. And I think that's what this whole issue is with our principals, they being empowered, and they feel that the school is their business unit, and that they have the ability to make some of those critical decisions that I think we all know they make every day. A high school principal is there from 6:00 in the morning till about 10:30 at night. I always say to them, if you leave the schools and working at the district, you can always, you know, perhaps run a town or a county, because there's many similarities in public administration and what they do. He's also worked hard with FADS, with the Superintendent's Association, and getting that certification in one year is not a small feat. It took me several years to get a school board certification. And I don't know that we've had a superintendent who has done that, and there are a lot of superintendents who never get that certification. We know that he is a visionary. We know that he is great financially, but I look at, I look at his leadership culture as effective. I look at his policy and governance really as exemplary. And the reason I said that is because he makes it possible for me to do my job well as a board member by keeping me informed, and much more informed than I feel I have ever been. I think the, the whole development of the, the one-on-ones at the board table, his communicating with me has been, has been very good, and I seek out his counsel. I think he's been very helpful in our getting our $500,000 this year for the summer leadership institutes, which is part of my heart. And, and next year, we hope to do even more on the lobbying and work in Tallahassee. And then going forward, communications and, and community relations are an issue for me. I think it's effective, but could do better, and that is because I think we had a blip with our public relations in the beginning, and now I think we're, we're on the right track. Tracy Beaker's doing a great job. We just need more staff in that area, and she's working on that. So I have great, great hope for that. Organizational management, I think, is, is quite good. And by that, I'm looking at our financial reporting and our achievement through the GFOA and the ASBO, received a clean external audit. I think he is a financial wizard, and his budget is truly his own. He understands and speaks with the financial staff with authority and professionalism, and we don't have Al Whitner any longer, but we have Mitzi Corcoran, and we have great people in our finance department, but he truly understands it. I have to mention the exemplary fashion at which he rolled his sleeves up and got involved with Hurricane Irma when we assisted more than 20,000 residents from Sarasota and Charlotte County in our, in our schools. And I think that was an important impact. And when I went down for some training this year, just a few minutes, weeks ago, I got some, some accolades from the county staff in, in saying that he was there, and he was present, and he was always doing things. I guess the thing that I graded the lowest was, I really think we need to reprogram and redo our human resource management, and I've talked to Roy about this before, but we need to be much friendlier, much more positive, much more customer service-oriented. We need to make sure that, that our process for applying for a job, I mean, we want to keep those people in the system and give them jobs that we are, are getting back to them in a timely fashion. But just everything that we can do to be great customer service folks in, in every arena, we need to really do that. Instructional leadership, and I think that's the empowerment that he has given Dr. Kingsley and the other executive directors and cabinet members, I would have to say, is, is excellent. To go up four, almost four points this year is exceptional, and I can't say enough about that. I think our values and ethics leadership are good. I think some of the things that we're doing, and we're putting into processes now with our issues with social and emotional learning, and the things that we're looking at doing are, are going to serve us well. Dr. Bowden does write well. He does speak well. He has certainly accomplished in many of the professional issues that I think are important to, to managing and to being a superintendent. And I really think that he did well with labor relations this year in getting a two-year contract, which made it easier for all of us. But I too, like Shirley, would like to see us get along better, to get a dialogue with the union, and to work more homogeneously with, with our union folks. We always have. I miss their relationship that I had with them in the past, and I think we need to, to work at that even more so this next year, and I'm hoping that, that we will do that. So I would rank him as a four, a meets above, above the median point. I think that Dr. Bowden has great potential. If we didn't have Dr. Bowden here, I don't know who would come to this school district and be our superintendent. I think we would find it very, very difficult. Across the state of Florida, there are less and less people applying, because Florida is a difficult, a difficult state in which to be on a school board or to be a superintendent. Some of the school districts are way, way too large in size and scope, right? And, and I really feel that, that we made the right choice. I think he's doing a great job. I think, yes, he can always do better. We can always do better. But I would say that, that I'm happy with his performance. It can always be tweaked here and there. And I know that most of the things I've spoken about, we've talked about before, and we can always do better. So I'm in great, great hope that this will be another great year. I would like to see us at number one. And I know that we will have to look at your, your performance bonus, and, you know, I think we'll do that probably after, after this is done, right? And so I would just say, it's been, it's been a tough year, but it's been a good year. But, you know, everything seems to be tough these days, so why should we be any different?
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Robinson.
And here's to you, Mr. Robinson.
Yes, yes. So I have a slightly different take than, than the previous speakers, if that's okay. I, I think one of the things that makes our school district great is, is almost threefold. Our, the admin, staff, the teachers and classmates. our admin, staff, the teachers and classified employees, and our community as a whole. So somebody mentioned something about face under pressure. When Parkland happened, Dr. Bowden decided to stay away, but our admin staff stepped up and were able to, you know, deal with those 25 threats, and so did the sheriff's office. And so, you know, its signs are good of how good the admin staff did. But going to, if I can bifurcate the other two, when we're talking about the community relationships, I mean, a lot has been said over the past couple of months about the law enforcement, you know, and it really shone through when we met, when they, when Ziegler and Dr. Bowden, at the end of June, met, and they were all like, "What took you so long?" And they had so much input in of how we could do things. And I think that we should have listened to the input of the subject matter experts. But I keep going back to another relationship of SCF, and it's a common theme. And it was Dr. Bowden's, I mean, Dr. Pope's field's letter, where she mentioned a casual disregard for her concerns. And that seemed to resonate. It wasn't just law enforcement officers and municipalities and the sheriff's office saying that, but it was SCF saying that, "You had a casual disregard for our concerns," which resulted in ending, the end result was students weren't able to take dual enrollment for a year at a particular school. So it had a real impact, that issue. And so, but the casual disregard for people's concern didn't stop there. During the, we're talking about the union. We had a climate survey, and part of the climate survey, talking about uncomfortable conversations, was the anonymous comments. It was uncomfortable to have the comments, but the comments gave you something to strive to do better. So you could either strive to do better, and you're not going to get rid of all the comments, but, you know, try to see if there's a trend and see what you can do to improve, or you can just get rid of the comments. That's one way to get rid of all the negative comments, and we would decide, it was decided to just simply get rid of the negative comments, which showed, again, a casual disregard for those people's concerns. So when the union came out, I actually was out there, you know, having fun with them when they were out there protesting, and a sign was up there, and it said, the sign was just offensive to those people who came out here wanting their voices to be heard. They just wanted someone to listen to them. And putting that sign up there while those people came out showed a casual disregard for those people's concerns. It's just a common theme throughout the process. If we can, much has been talked about the union contract during that process. You've got to remember that, I have to apologize to Ms. Brown. Ms. Brown wanted to have an executive session. I said, "You know what? I got to stand firm. I was, I believed wrongly in the past that you just blindly follow your superintendent. I'm just supposed to, you know, I'm just going to support him." And I didn't second that motion for Ms. Brown. And I was wrong, Ms. Brown. I should have done that. We ended up getting a contract, I ended up reading about in the paper, I guess you guys, he called you guys, to find out that it was completely different than what we had discussed in the past. And now he has said multiple times that that raise that we end up voting on is going to, you know, have negative financial implications, and it's all fault because we're the ones who agreed to vote on it. I just don't buy into that narrative. That tells me I can't blindly follow anymore. If I'm going to be held responsible for the actions, which I should be, I should be held responsible for my actions, what happens to the board, then I should be willing to make those tough decisions. I should be able, willing to question. I shouldn't blindly follow to what is going on. I am worried about our finances. We're going to end up at 7.5%. That's the projection. But there has been a lot of costs, especially with safety and security, that are going to possibly jeopardize us, so we're going to end up below 7.5%. Certainly going to cause the case that maybe in the following year, if we continue deficit spending, it does give me great concern. I have voiced this in multiple occasions, that I have deep concern about that. As far as, we have had multiple times during meetings, you know, I understand things happen. You have to give things out at meetings at the last minute. But when we're talking about big things, like the hardening of the school, that was done at the dais, it was passed out to us at the city of Venice, contract with the sheriff, passed out at the dais last time. I mean, those things are big issues and should be handled ahead of time. I found out about the hardening thing 10 days ago by reading in the paper, by conversation you had at Lowell and Comas. So it was something that had been brought up 10 days earlier, but I didn't actually get the actual documents until I actually came to the board meeting, and then I was expected to vote on it. You know, I ended up voting on it, but it does put us in a precarious position. I mean, us having information ahead of time is extremely important in our job to be able to do our job. Are you okay, Ms. Zucker?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just curious.
I'm trying to get a little stretch of the mic.
Okay, okay. So there are other things that you can read out in my evaluation, but I just, I think you kind of get the gist of where I'm going. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it's, people have concerns, and I think that they should be, you know, if nothing else, listened to and drawn out. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the rocky start there. I just, it's a little different than we've done before, and what I wanted to do was to hear from everyone and also kind of ensure that the quantification standpoint that we were going to go down was going to be an equal, you know, numerical element of the tool. The one thing, if I went back and watched the June meeting that we discussed, that some of us, as we created this evaluation tool, that of the nine standards, some weighted heavier than others for individuals. So I know that Mrs. Goodwin gave a total of four. I know, Mrs. Zucker, you said it was 37. Did you weight that? Was the denominator under nine, all equal?
Yes.
Okay. And Mrs. Brown, what was your total?
My total is 30.
And did you weight each standard equally?
No.
Okay. What was your denominator?
You want to know?
Or your total, which other, either you give me the total number or the one through five, it doesn't matter.
One and two was four, three was three, four was four, five was three, six and seven was four, eight and nine were two.
So your total?
Total is 30.
But at the end of the day, we have to have a number between one and five.
That's what I'm, that's why I'm asking. Okay.
So.
And you, okay, so 30, and you ranked each standard equal, or no? To come to the one through, so we all each have to come through a one through five score, right?
Oh.
Okay. So.
I did each one of them. I mean, individually, so I'm supposed to, I mean, if you divide this up, I'm like 3.3. I mean, is what.
So equal. Okay. And Mr. Robinson, did you? Okay. So you did it by nine.
So.
Thank you. Give me one second. This is again why I liked it to have been a little bit in advance, so it wasn't this, so we could calculate it accordingly. And the reason this is important is this is contingent upon his bonus and additional items, so.
Well, that's the other thing. I mean, do we take and add up everybody's score, or do we take, you know?
So again, I went back to the discussion, and this is, when you look at the tool, there was nothing finalized on it, but that's why, if you look at the nine standards, my personal, I weighted, one, I weighted leadership and culture, organizational management, and values, ethics, and leadership. I ranked, I weighted those two times as much as the others, so my denominator is different, right? Right. So everyone's different, but we talked about that. So my total number came out, that's why equalling to, no, it was lower. It was 1.16, but.
You were, you took some of these and said you weighted them more than what's on here?
Yeah, and that was discussed in our workshop when we created the tool. So.
So.
So the one through five is ultimately where each of you ranked him one through five, I'm assuming. So that's where we can make it as simple as possible and calculate that, divide it by five, and come to the.
What was your total scores?
Mine were, and I, when I met with.
Just want the total.
14.
Okay. And Eric, your total?
And my denominator was under 12.
I thought this was collateral. We were just going to discuss this.
Well, I just want to point out that we, we as a board, we actually came 5-0 and agreed to a certain process. And the process that we agreed to up in the 315 building was, different people are going to have different things that are more important to them. And we were all fine with that, if Shirley wanted to weight something more than something else. But at the end, we were going to come up with a number, you know, someone's three, someone's four, someone's one, and that we agreed that we were going to take the average of all five of us. That was what we had all agreed to last year when we did the evaluation.
Well, that's what I was saying. Are we taking the average of the total scores?
That's why she says.
That's what I'm asking. I mean, because.
But if you take the average of the total scores and somebody.
Then why did we total the scores if we're not going to take the average of the total scores?
I didn't total my scores, because we had agreed that we were going to take different weights. Because if you do the total, what happens if somebody had weighted one thing more than the other? If you do.
Waited higher than another, you give it a higher point, or I don't understand.
So let's say.
You give it a higher or a lower score.
Let's say for the sake of example, somebody wanted to say student achievement is much more, I consider that much more important to me than, say, human resource. So someone could say, "The fact I gave them a five in student achievement is more important than the four I gave them in human resource." I'm just giving the numbers.
Okay, so the four I gave him over student achievement, I'm going to make that eight and.
Well, it's not one to five. That's where the math were, I mean.
Either way, either way, each would come to.
But it's an individual, a board member could say, "Yeah, I'm going to weight them all the same." That's, you have the power to decide that.
We have to tell.
Exactly. That's what I'm trying to calculate here. So what is your overall one through five score for the superintendent?
She gave it 30.
No.
What is the average?
Average. Thank you.
I would like to give them both. I don't know how, when you, how you do that and makes a difference.
Because at the end of the day, you're going to end up with a number between one and five.
Right. That's my, and equalize each.
Well, because you could take the total score and divide it by five.
We can do that, too.
I want to see what the difference is, that's all. I would like.
It should be the same.
It should be.
I weighted nine.
So your 14 is weighted?
Yes, that's what she said.
But that's, but the denominator equals out to 12, so it's, I did it, I balanced it, so.
Do you have, how many categories do you have?
Nine.
All right. So if someone weighted everything the same, you would add the numbers and divide by nine.
Yes.
If you chose one category and said that was twice as important as the other eight, for example, and I'm just picking a number, and your number there was three, you would double that to six, you would add all your numbers in the nine categories and divide by 10, because you had nine categories, but one was ranked twice, so it was, so you're dividing by 10, if that's the way you all agreed to do it. And I was not at that meeting, so. But mathematically, that's how that would work, from what I'm understanding you've agreed to.
Correct. That was my understanding, and I went back to listen to the workshop. It was, I remember there was.
The school board member, he would tell you that. Correct.
And that's why I was asking what the final number was for each board member. So, Jane?
If you ranked them all the same, then you would just add up the.
Total and divide by nine.
And divide by nine.
That's what normally is done. Jane, what were you, please, four? What's your total score?
Okay.
The only one I'm missing is Eric's.
And yours?
But the total score is immaterial, but it's 10.
Yours is 10?
Yeah, but you do the math.
What was Jane's?
Well, if your total score was 10 and you weighted them all equally, it would be, okay.
That's why I just need each individual board's member, numerical number, so I can divide it by five. That's all I need. That's it. So Shirley, what is your one through five number?
3.3.
Perfect. Okay, that's what I have. And then I had Caroline, I had you at 4.11 based on equal weighting. Yep? Okay. And you're a flat four? And Eric, you're one? And all of this will be in the evaluation, so available. Which brings it to 2.72, if my math is correct. Again, this is why I wish we had it in advance. Okay, so then moving to, so there's a couple of different items that needed. Oh, I apologize. I did kind of start my evaluation, and I guess I got sidetracked, but, you know, I will go back to a lot of the things I said earlier, is that I've been very concerned with some of the, ultimately, it comes down to the culture, and I weighted that higher than others, and I waited, I waited that organizational management being critical, and I also rated the values and ethics and leadership high, because I think as a CEO of the organization, evaluating what your strengths and weaknesses are, and I think that was done early on when you came on board. I know that there was a lot of concern about elementary, and you reorganized to have Dr. Kingsley in the curriculum department, and I think that was very wise because of her strengths. And so I think that's great, but ultimately, I think, well, that's correct, but, well, the superintendent component. But again, I reflect on this past year, and I think there's been tremendous successes within this district, but a lot of them have been cast in, a shadow has been, has cast a shadow over the district that, because of, I think, crisis after crisis and turmoil after turmoil. So in my evaluation under leadership and culture, I didn't rank you very high. I think as, just to preface, I am tougher on evaluations than, as I've said before, even when I'm evaluated professionally. I think that constantly you want to, especially in your first year, I think you need to work towards goals and work hard and constantly, most often would be developing or effective. I'd say would be typically the standard when I look at things. But I think that there were some key areas of major concern on the leadership and culture component. I think that, I know it was addressed earlier, but I was, I'm concerned with, there seems to be a lot of crises that were focused on self-preservation rather than the organization and outcomes and results. I believe that leadership has a devastating impact on the culture, morale, and overall climate of the school district, which will inevitably have a negative impact in our classrooms. In my notes, list out some examples, and it is the regular communication and press releases. Again, for more about Dr. Bowden than sometimes the district. I think there was a lack of presence and leadership during critical times. I think there's been a lack of personal ownership and accountability when there have been challenging circumstances, especially that have been discussed at this table. I think also at this table, there have been levels of insubordination, you know, in behavior during board meetings that have been disturbing and disruptive. Finally, I know I discussed this with Dr. Bowden before, and today is the unbalanced distribution of information, and that's what I was starting with in my discussion earlier, was that if we, doesn't matter where we, what my personal opinion is of either of you, we are all each individually elected, and we need to find a way to work together. But in order to be an effective board, good board governance is providing everyone equal information at the same time in advance as much as possible, so that we can come together and make educated decisions. And I believe in the last six months, that has been derailed in a significant way, and I'm very concerned about it. In my discussion again with Dr. Bowden, I think it comes down to, where do we go from here? I think there's been tremendous success on the education and curriculum components, and that is what we're here to do, but there's also, in order to maintain our great leaders and educational leaders, and ensure enrollment, because people want to go to our schools, is having a strong culture where people can thrive, whether you're talking professionally or you're talking about students. And I am gravely concerned on the path that we're on. The reason I wanted to have additional conversations was to hear from, you know, other board members. I think, I don't want to beat some of these into, you know, submission, because I think a lot of them are duplicative. You know, the communications and community relations, I know I mentioned I was concerned about the deterioration, and it is not, you know, sometimes I think we're just in our own bubble, and it's just what we think, and that's again why I wanted to have this conversation. But I also think that when you go out to the grocery store and somebody mentions it to you, that's shocking, and it concerns me, and it makes me disappointed, because I know so many people work so hard in this community and in this school district for what is right, for what is good, and for what our focus is, and it's disgraceful. for what our focus is, and it's disgraceful that we, that there's any other regular disruption, and we should be focused on that. Organizational management, I think I mentioned that, I am very pleased to see further analysis of data to help facilitate decision-making. The district's dashboard, which we saw today, is an excellent tool, as it continues to develop and allow our community convenient access to the district's data, expanding transparency. The reorganization that the superintendent had identified as being necessary to achieve the district goals was indeed controversial. I know that there are certainly areas to celebrate relating to student achievement, however, I still think we need to analyze to ensure that those positions in organization was what ultimately brought us across the board. I think we're a big ship, and to do that in one year, again, I do not want to diminish the great successes that were accomplished, I just want to be cautious on what really brought us there, and that's something that we as a board need to make sure we properly evaluate. Human resource management, and to me, this is a very critical area, especially as we discuss safety and security. In the past year, there have been significant areas of concern pertaining to the HR processes. I'm encouraged that the board, with the help of the Equity Officer and General Counsel, were able to adopt and revise policy on equity complaints and policies. I was concerned to find that some of the procedures addressed during that workshop may not be implemented, and I look forward to receiving an update on that. Staff evaluation is something that I have raised with, raises a major issue that I would like the board to address, especially as we work to focus on retaining and recruiting high-quality teachers and support staff, and I believe if our employees don't have faith in their evaluation tool, then we risk lowering the morale and losing them to other districts or fields. If you look at the process that we did to adopt this evaluation tool, I think all of us were around the table, all of us were discussing it, and I think that's an instrumental component that we need to bring towards the district-wide and at the various positions. Instructional leadership, again, I'm encouraged to see a great number of academic increases across the district. I am concerned about our elementary schools, and I know that that's been addressed, and we're going to be focusing on that, and the, the final two ones, again, curriculum planning development, but the values and ethics, I find that were very similar to the category on, the first category, and so, again, don't want to be redundant, and then finally was the labor relations, which ironically, when we were doing our tool, was debated on whether or not to even include it on to the evaluation, and that's actually where the conversation stated where the weighting could be different. But I will tell you that as I reflect on certain benefits and, you know, positives and negatives, you know, I've always wanted to have a third-party negotiator, I thought it would help us, and put us in a better position from a financial standpoint, and I think actually for all parties involved, so I was encouraged to see that, but I, again, it kind of stems back to communication, and I know Mr. Robinson mentioned that, I was disappointed in the way that some of the miscommunication or the way in which the negotiations transpired, the last executive session we had was 3% across the board, two-year contract hoped for, and, you know, removing of steps, and I apologize too, to Mrs. Brown, who had sent out an email, and I recall talking to the superintendent on the 18th of January, about whether or not, because in my mind, if one board member wants to have an executive session, I have, I don't have an issue with doing that, but I think there was strategy involved, and I took the direction of the superintendent to stand strong, and was shocked to find via a press release what the deal was included, because it had a financial impact that was far beyond what I thought we had authorized, and now finds us, ourselves in a challenging position today financially. I, I am going to, I'm pleased that we're moving forward with an equal evaluation of what our numerical components are, I really do want this board to work together and find a common ground. I know that this illustrates a continued divide on where we stand on the leadership of this organization, I don't want to continue the divide, because I want this district to be successful, and, but I hope that you read through what was included in there and take it for perspective to grow, and for that, I'll leave it at that. So with the calculation, I have 2.72 as the average between the five board members. I do want to double-check that, because I don't want to make sure that everyone's numbers, but that is contingent upon, so the next two, there are a couple other items in this contract that are pertaining to the bonus, which had measurable metrics, there's also whether or not there will be a raise, Mrs. Zucker? Mrs. Zucker?
I would like to move that we increase the 2017, 2018 salary of the superintendent by 2.75% retroactive to July 1, 2017, and that we increase the 2018, '19 salary by 3.75% retroactively to July 1, 2018.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Mrs. Brown?
Oh, I didn't get queued, so I just want to point out that I was a little vindictive when the superintendent was picked, even though I changed my vote, and when there was a range in salaries, I think it was 185 to 225, or 240, I don't remember what it was, it was something, but I, I chose to start him at 185, and it seems that we've got some assistant superintendents making almost as much as our superintendent, so I definitely am going to go along giving the superintendent the same raises that we gave our employees.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
First off, I'm confused, because I thought it was if he had scored a three, I mean, am I misremembering?
Well, the contract states if the superintendent receives an effective evaluation, you are, you may determine his base salary for the 18, '19 school year, or shall receive a salary increase as determined in the sole discretion of the board. So as I understand your metrics, you have a one through five, with three being effective, I mean, you don't have gradations, so if the, if the number, as the chair has said, is 2.72, certainly among those, that would round to a three, which would be an effective evaluation.
Okay, if you want to round, that's fine. So is this the one that Mitzi sent out, where it was like $15,000, or $11,000, what was it?
Should we have done that?
I believe...
Because I think if we had to do from one to five, we should have made the motion first to, to do the three and rate them effective, or are we doing this all at once? I don't know.
I would agree with Mrs. Brown, but I think that that would be the appropriate next step, since that would be, that would continue to the next discussion.
If the board agrees to round up, then I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
I'm fine with that, too. But, so, so the total raise, how much is the total raise, Ms. Zucker?
I don't know, 2.75%.
So it's just going to be 2.75?
2.75, it's the same as was allocated to staff, 2.75.
So his raise will be 5,000?
Wow. Everybody awake?
So the raise is the 5,000?
2.75 to, in the last year.
Last year.
And 3.75 for this year.
Okay, so what's the total raise you're proposing? Total dollar?
I don't have the total dollar.
Close to 200,000.
200,000, what?
I think she means annual salary.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant his raise was 200,000. So it'll be $13,000 raise and change.
That's for both years, or each year?
That's for both years.
Oh, pro red, okay.
So my, my understanding of the motion is that the base salary for the 17, '18 year in the contract is 185,000, the motion is to increase that for the 17, '18 year 2.75%.
Correct.
And then for the upcoming 18, '19 year, take that revised salary, and add 3.75% to it, correct?
Correct.
So basically, he'll be getting a 7% pay raise today? The bottom line, he'll be getting...
Over two years.
He'll be getting a 7% pay raise?
Over two years.
Okay, I heard you the first time, but he's getting a 7% pay raise? I heard you, you said it over two years. I got it.
So, on the record that you're saying 7%?
7% pay raise.
Over the course of two years.
I just want to know, I just want to understand what it is that I'm voting. So it's $13,000, 7% pay raises, his pay fund is going to go up 7%, that's, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown? Was that from prior? We have a motion, a second, on the superintendent's salary increase. I know we're doing it a little bit backwards, I agree with Mrs. Brown, that we probably should have made a motion on...
I think by affirmation, we all agreed to make it
Effective, a three, okay. So, any other discussion on the salary increase? I, I think that's a significant raise, I, given where I stand, I don't believe that that's the path I want to see us go at this current moment, so I won't be supporting that. Mrs. Zucker?
The reason that I gave him that percentage is that I believe that's what we did for the teachers, and the other thing is that his assistant superintendent will be making more than he is. So it's not that we're throwing money at him, it's just that where his salary is not up there, where the other superintendent, assistant superintendent coming in is, I think that's kind of ridiculous. So that's why I didn't go really overboard, but I tried to come in where our staff came in.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mrs. Brown?
For those of you who didn't have pen and paper out and everything, that means for last year, the two and a half, 2.75 would give him a $5,000 increase, so he'd go from 185,000 to 190,000 plus change, and then for next year, he will get the 3.75, as our other administrators and everyone else was getting, so that'll be an increase of 7,000, so he will be getting 197,215, which is still less than what I would have given to another superintendent who would have been hired, and... So, so it'll be 197,215.
Any other comments? This will be a voice vote, and I'll do a roll call. Mrs. Brown?
Pardon me?
We're going to be voting.
Oh, yes.
Yes, Mrs. Zucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
And the chair votes no, and the motion passes three to two. Moving on, Mrs. Zucker?
I move that we extend the contract of the superintendent by two years to June 30, 2022, and that we remove Section 14A and 14B from the contract, eliminating the board's ability to terminate the superintendent without cause. I've never heard of anybody being terminated without cause, and I was surprised that that was in his contract when I read it, so I would like it removed, because that's like a, somebody can say, well, you went to the bathroom and took too long, so you're fired. It's a little ridiculous, but this whole thing is, but that's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Mr. Robinson, I'm sorry, any comments? Mr. Robinson had his cue on.
Yeah, this is, this is so unusual. First of all, when you negotiate something with the contract, and you're going to change the contract, you get concessions from somebody, that's typically what you do. If you're going to give somebody something, you get concessions, so to, you negotiate things. We actually have in the contract that Ms. Brown negotiated, where we do the renewal next summer, so to do that now, I don't, I don't understand why you would, would do that now, and, and now you're going to make it possibly, clearly it's not, but possibly, you could have three members of the board who don't want someone to be the superintendent, but they're no longer, they're going to be stuck with the superintendent for even longer period of time, because you're going to renew it, to require people to have a superintendent that a majority of the board doesn't want, and so, so we always say, he's got, he learns to count to three, well, no, now he can count to four, because you could have a majority of the board that doesn't want a particular superintendent. This is just bad policy all the way around. Why would you want to create a district where you had a majority of the school board who doesn't want a superintendent in place? I mean, I don't think Todd Bowden would want to be, you know, in there like that, I just think this sets, this is not something that, that has to do with, this is not a comment